Good evening and welcome to the July 7th work session of the Keystone Central Board of Directors. We will start with a flag salute in a moment of silence. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dietrich.
Here.
Mrs. Donahue. Mr. Elling. Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Knopf. Mr. Coke. Ms. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
I'm here virtually.
And Mrs. Smith, present. Five members present.
Okay, we're going to start off the evening with a presentation from Dr. Francine Endler from the, the Executive Director of the Central Intermediate Unit Number 10.
So as Francine's making her way to the microphone, just wanted to mention to the, the board members and the public that several months ago Jeff Johnston, made a suggestion that we ask Dr. Endler to come and share with our board, a lot of information or some information about the intermediate unit and how it supports our school district and the other school districts in our region. And so after, didn't take much coercion, just a simple ask to get Dr. Endler scheduled for us this evening. It's my absolute pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Francine Endler, who I view as a trusted colleague and I have the utmost respect for. So, welcome to Keystone Central.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here on such a beautiful evening. I provided all of you with a packet of some information. I just wanted to highlight a few things. And they do have extra copies. But for me here, if you're bored into this, they're attending virtually.
Hold on, give me one second. Is that my?
Thank you. I wanted to provide some information. I have a very brief PowerPoint. Don't panic. It's only a few slides. But I also wanted to share, in the folder is a document with some fast facts about Central Intermediate Unit 10, as well as a state mandates checklist. We all know that school boards are, and school districts are required to do an incredible amount of work with mandates. And I wanted to include that. That is a service that we provide or a document that we provide to all of our districts and career and technology centers to try to keep track of all the mandates. Since January of 2021, there have been multiple additional mandates placed on school districts in the Commonwealth. So that list kind of keeps everybody up to date with what we all have to do. Again, I am Francine Endler, I'm the Executive Director at Central Intermediate Unit 10, and I do want to thank all of you and Dr. Martin for asking me to come here this evening. I met Dr. Martin many, many years ago when we were principals and going through some training. And we've been able to maintain a wonderful collegial relationship over the years. Central Intermediate Unit 10 recently completed our comprehensive plan, which Dr. Martin was a part of our steering committee. And as you'll see, we have developed a new mission and vision statement. One thing unique about intermediate units and particularly about intermediate unit 10 is that we serve children birth through adult learners. Not all intermediate units provide adult education classes, but we, we are one of those providers. So with a new mission, a new vision statement and.
A new logo that was designed by students at CPI. We actually had submissions from the, from Keystone Central School District, from CPI and from the Clinton County Technology Center. And we were able to go through a process where.
Thank you. Through a process of reviewing that student artwork, we were able to come up with a new logo. So we have a new brand, a new mission and vision, and we are looking to support our school districts post 2020 education. On the next slide, you'll see a map of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and you'll see a bunch of numbers. There are 29 intermediate units in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We are right smack in the middle, Center, Clearfield and Clinton Counties as IU 10. We have a lot of geographic real estate. So we're not, we are not large in terms of numbers of school districts or numbers of students served, but we are large by geography. That just gives you a little bit of an idea of where we are in relation to the other intermediate units. In terms of schools, public school districts, we have 12 public school districts. Obviously, one here in Clinton County, we have seven in Clearfield County and four in Center County. We also provide services to four charter schools. Three of those are in Center County and one is in Clinton County. And then while there are multiple non-public schools within the IU 10 footprint, we currently provide services to 11, the 11 non-public schools that are listed. And we have three career and technology centers within our footprint. The governance of an intermediate unit is a bit different than a school, a typical school board. We do have representatives from all 12 of our sending districts, and we have one at-large seat. Public school code says you can't have less than 13 board members, but you can't have more than 35. So I do have colleagues that have a board consisting of 35 people. I know, that is very, very unique. Our board members are nominated by each sending school district board. And we are excited to have Mr. Johnston as a member from Keystone Central, and he also serves as our Vice President. We have, they're elected from a one to three-year term, and our reorganization is actually in July. Whereas school boards are required by code to reorganize in December, we reorganize in July. We have one meeting, which is at the end of the month on a Thursday, intended to not be at times when our sending districts are holding their meetings. And at this point, we only have two standing committees. We have a policy committee as well as a facilities and finance committee that can have ad hoc committees as needed. Additional governance, so what does our IU board do? They obviously appoint and evaluate me as the Executive Director. They approve professional and non-professional staff appointments. They approve contracts for specialized services. Some of those would be things like physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, or other related services. And we do provide some of those services by contract to Keystone Central. They adopt the IU budget, which looks a little bit different than a school district budget. We receive and expend funds to conduct programs. We have depositories as well as you all do, and we employ a solicitor. What, what our board cannot do is we cannot levy taxes, and we also cannot issue a bond. So construction for us looks very different, as Mr. Johnston has had the opportunity to be up close and personal with that. Our organizational chart, the size of our organization, we have 145 employees over a three-county area. We again have a board of directors and I have seven cabinet level directors and then those who report to them. So quick overview, we are a small organization, again, big geography, not as large as some of the other intermediate units. I have colleagues that have over 4,000 employees within their intermediate unit. We are sort of a boutique IU when it comes to that in terms of, of our level of staffing. So you may wonder, how did I use, come into play? As you'll see on the, the next slide, in 1971, intermediate units were established by the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and it replaced the 67 county educational offices. They, they are, most programs that they had were state-funded. As we look forward into the 90s, the intermediate unit's role was restructured by the legislation. Limited subsidies occurred at that time, and then districts, it was at that point that districts began to purchase services from the intermediate units. State subsidies were eliminated from intermediate units at, in 2011. And as we move forward, the General Assembly looked at us as having an entrepreneurial nature as well. So we were able to sell services and try to be entrepreneurial with the things that we are doing. And when that happened, the boundaries of intermediate units opened. So our intermediate unit can provide a service that folks from other parts of the state can purchase. Funding of the intermediate units, just a quick pie chart to show you what our allocations look like. Largest portion obviously is federal allocations followed by state. We have an overall budget of just over $26 million, but our budgets are more like a tapestry. In a school district, it's a general operating budget and everything's kind of under one umbrella. In an intermediate unit, we have many, many budgets. I believe we're approximating 50 different budgets that we manage. So you also may wonder, what are some of the things that intermediate units do? On the next slide, you can see that, starting at the top right-hand corner, we serve our youngest learners through preschool early intervention. And we do have early intervention staff here in Lock Haven. We have a very small office in Lock Haven. We serve school age students, and that's K to 12 in our public, non-public and charter schools. Our Development Center for Adults is the program that works with our adult learners. Curriculum and Innovation provides training to any school district as well as non-publics and charter schools. We can also provide services to administrative and management teams, support, whether it's business office or through the executive office. And we serve our community and region and state in a few ways. And most recently, in the last two years, we work very closely with the Department of Health through all of the pandemic work and the vaccination clinics that all the intermediate units stood up in March of 2021. We also work very closely with the Office of the Governor, and a part of our work also, much like what all of you do, surrounds advocacy for public education. Any questions or anything I can answer for anybody?
I can't see our participants to see if Bo or Elizabeth, it doesn't look like Bo, we can't see. Make sure Elizabeth's not raising her hand there. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Francine?
No, I just want to thank her for being here tonight. And because I, I really don't think that, and the reason I, I ask if you could come down and do a quick overview is because I, I think it's important that all of our board members, it's unfortunate that some of them aren't here tonight, but I think it's important that they really know what the, what the IU does and the services that it has and what role it plays for us. And I know we do take advantage at Keystone of a number of the services that the IU offers. And it's just, I've enjoyed being a part of, of the team up there. And, and I think Dr. Endler's done a great job since she's been here. She's had a lot to deal with. A lot of real estate issues, but, but she's taken that on and we're, I've been very pleased with, with, with what's been going on there. And so I thank you for coming down and giving us a little bit of an idea of what all goes on up there in Phillipsburg and so.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the warm welcome. Appreciate it. And Jack, if Dr. Martin knows how to get in touch with me, also my business card is, is included. So have a great meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We did not have anybody sign up to speak this evening, so we will move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. We have several facility projects underway this summer, including the resurfacing of the track at Central Mountain Middle School, and also the renovation of the Central Mountain Middle School cafeteria into the Wildcat Cafe. This project has involved our students in the design process as the other two cafeteria projects did, and I'm very impressed with the outcome. I hope that many of our board members can have an opportunity to stop by the middle school sometime this summer and check out the, the new digs there in the cafeteria. It's a lot of school spirit. I know that Dave Peters, the principal, is super proud of the work there and his collaboration with Sharon Berger and Rob Pacella has been very productive in getting, you know, a great product. I want our kids to feel happy and to want to be, want to be in these spaces and that they feel respected in them. And I think that the, the work that I've seen so far really projects that. Mr. Peters, anything else you want to add to that?
I will react to what you're saying. I think the work that I applaud here for efforts alone. To get things prepared. I don't usually need the microphone. I would just applaud Sharon Berger and her efforts. It's been a long process to plan through. She spent a lot of time and effort in meeting with students and taking their input into the project. And, and we were a little delayed from when we originally had, had our timeline to try to get things in place. But overall, the, the work that's been done is phenomenal. Anybody that I've had the opportunity to share photos with or that, Mrs. Lynch had stopped by the other day on a walk with her dog, and she got to peek in and just see a few things, and it's very impressive. I welcome all of you, you know, to stop by at any point in time because it really is an impressive space. And I think our students will really appreciate all the effort that went into it.
Thank you. A special shout out to our full board for supporting, you know, the project and this work. But a special, huge thank you to the facility committee who's been putting some extra time into projects like this. Also, another shout out, Food Services Director Sharon Berger, CTC, CTC Director Kurt Lynch, and our CTC teachers, Vinnie Kishball and John May, for being highlighted by the PSBA Summer Series Video Story on our Farm to Table Initiative. This uses our greenhouses and our aquaponic system to enhance the natural resources curriculum and the culinary arts curriculum. It's very impressive to see our admin and staff working together to create such an authentic learning experience for our students. So if you didn't have a chance to see that video, I believe it was sent to board members and also pushed out on our social media pages maybe about two weeks ago. But what an exciting opportunity to showcase our, our students and our staff. So also just wanted to share that last week, I had the opportunity to present along with 10 members of our leadership team at the AASA National Conference in Washington DC. This conference was part of the Learning 2025 Commission's chief objective for the Learning 2020. This group is really interested in safely and equitably preparing students for the workplace and a society of the future. Our presentation was entitled Developing Collective Leader Efficacy for Impactful Change. Our leadership team shared our story of change over the past three years, along with the challenges and obstacles that we've incurred, and how we collectively used our leadership skills to empower each other and our staff through planning and effective professional learning over the past year. We were also able to attend a variety of sessions, of sessions and learn from colleagues across the nation about their stories, their strategies, and even to get some advice on how to avoid some pitfalls in the work of redesigning schools for the future. Also want to say thank you to the members of our team who did take time out of their summer to go to this conference, as well as board members, Tracy Smith and Roger Elling for coming and supporting our work and giving us an opportunity to showcase what we're doing. I know it meant a lot for our team for you to be there and, and support us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We had a great time down there in Washington, learned a lot, especially from other school districts comparable to ours. And we're excited to see where the Learning 2025 takes us into the future. And that's all I have.
All right.
So there's no committee reports this evening. We have our treasurer's report and the financial reports and our student enrollment. Any board members have any questions on those comments? So. Or no, that is board stuff. Okay, so under board, we have our annual contracts with different councils. Dorothy Ballinger, David Lindsay and Kingsbury Herman. Board, and there's another one, Lam Walton and Heimbach. Any questions on those contracts?
I just had a quick question. I mean, we're very fortunate. They seem to work really well for the district. Is there anything major that changed in the contracts? I mean, I didn't go way back, but is there anything new or different, or is this sort of just?
No, I don't. Susan, if you could give me a nod on this, but I don't believe there was any even change in fees from previous year contracts to this year. No change in fees.
Thank you so much.
And each one of these groups tends to have a specialty for our district. And we've, we've used them for specific things based on their special areas of expertise.
And then we have the instructional time templates for K to 12 and our CTC.
So both of the documents are almost identical, but because we have two different AUN numbers for the state, it's necessary to have two different documents. And what this is, this will be the third time that the, we've asked the board to improve an emergency instructional time format. This came about because of the pandemic and because school code is so archaic that it also, the school code of 1949 states that we have to be in school for 180 days. And that is in the form of a traditional in-person learning. And so this instructional time template is what was determined to be the best workaround with school code without changing it. So basically what this says is that we have an instructional plan to meet the 180-day requirements, even if it's not in the traditional sense of students in seats.
And then we have our updated health and safety plans for both K to 12 and CTC.
These health and safety plans have not changed in content. I believe there's been one, there was one phrase that I took out that said, as much as possible or to the maximum extent possible out of seating students. But outside of that, the content of this is identical to the same plan that you had approved for us in February. It's a requirement of the federal dollars that we received through ESER to have an updated health and safety plan every six months. And then each time that we review the plan and resubmit the, we have to resubmit the plan to PDE. It's also posted on our website. And so you'll see that the reviews and the revisions have been going on since July 9th of 2021. And we will continue to just track those changes as we go. And key points, masks will remain voluntary unless there are any universal orders that are coming down. And we're still doing promoting physical distancing for anybody who exhibits symptoms. We're doing some universal screening, just asking parents to do that. Our nurses will do that if students indicate any symptoms. Hand washing and respiratory etiquette will continue to be promoted, as well as cleaning our facilities. And the additional ventilation settings that we put in place will remain at fresh air ventilation set at 25%. And contact tracing, we have all been trained through Johns Hopkins, but at this point in time, we are not conducting any contact tracing because the CDC is not recommending that we do that. And the diagnostic and screening testing, we have tests, the test of state program. But because it's optional as to whether or not you want to quarantine, then we're not, we haven't utilized that a whole lot, but it is at our disposal. And again, we will provide resources and information about vaccinations in the area and our, through our social media platform and other communication processes. And again, we make sure that all of our students have the accommodations with disabilities. And we will continue to coordinate with the state and local health officials as needed to monitor the pandemic. So not a lot of changes there at all. We're just going to continue to do the things that make sense regardless of which communicable disease. And we'll continue to monitor what's happening with this current pandemic as we move through it.
And then we have the KCSD CTE Correction Plan and Status Update. We were all mailed, emailed this.
Yeah, this was sent to all of the board members. So through our auditing process, the Bureau of Career and Technical Education did have a group of folks here this past spring. They sat down and met with Kurt Lynch, myself, Daisy Killinger, they met with a lot of teachers toward our classrooms, looked at a lot of documents. And they had nothing but kudos for us when they sat down and met with us. And low and behold, when the document came through, they had some correction areas. So what I'd like to do is just to let Mr. Lynch explain any of the key areas in this plan for corrective action. And it sounds like, Mr. Lynch, that almost all of the CTCs that in the auditing process are getting some recommendations in some of these areas. So it seems to be kind of a standard practice coming out of.
Definitely not, it's not abnormal. Yeah, and there's some things on there that they missed during the audit that I had answered even before it was, as soon as they gave me corrective action. And there's, if you read the whole document, there's lots of accommodations. Couple of things, they're watching our, our rate of enrollment and want to know how we're handling that. You'll see that in there. And at the same time, we were moving equipment for the sale. So they thought that was in the way, but it was sitting waiting to go to sale. They'll see that in there too. But there's nothing major in there at all. Actually, they were very complimentary if you read the whole document.
So the one thing that I will mention because it will impact Curricular Co-Curricular Committee, and then eventually the full board, is that in our local graduation requirements, students are required at the high school level to take so many elective credits within certain areas within our curriculum. And their recommendation is that we remove that local requirement. It is not part of PDE requirement or Chapter 4 regulations. As long as we have those electives available to people, to their students, they should not have to be required to take them in certain areas. So their recommendation is that we move, remove that selective credit, selective credit criteria out of our graduation requirements. The reason they're recommending that is they believe that by forcing students to take selective credits in some of those other areas prohibits them from accessing the career and technical education programming fully to get all the hours they need to be a completer of programs. We agree, at least Kurt Lynch and I agree with that recommendation. So we will be working through that with the curriculum folks and bringing that to Curricular Co-Curricular for consideration in our upcoming student handbooks.
Great. Any board members have any questions on any of that? Move on to policy. We have six policies. I believe they're on the second read on them. First read, okay. Discipline weapons, terroristic threats, student assistant program, threat assessment and bullying and cyberbullying. Any questions or comments on those?
Just, these are policies that we have vetted through the policy committee for revisions and followed. Most of them, the changes are directly related to the PSBA recommendations from the service they provide to the district.
Then we have our work session and voting session meeting minutes from last month. And under business, we have our bills for payment. Looks like the Justice Works Agreement for Student Services. We have an agreement with Gordian for the Renova Elementary Fence Project, not to exceed $30,204.10 paid for by the Capital Projects Fund.
Could I go back to one second, back to the Justice Works contract, and you'll see that in other contracts. But I just want to call your attention to page two. There's a highlighted section under four. This is an area of the contracts that we have requested be put into the contract based on the board's desire to have clearances on file and certifications on file here at the district for any contracted service providers. Anyone who's working with our students. So we've added that into formal language. We've asked for that and everyone's complied with it, but we've been starting to add it to the actual contract language as per the board's desire.
Thank you. And this is the PATTA and West Grant, to prove the grant agreement for developing future special educators in the amount of $15,000. Any questions on that?
How will this work? I mean, who is?
I'm going to have to ask if you pass the mic to Dr. Barnhart. I'm going to have to ask if you pass the mic to Dr. Barnhart.
I read this and I was curious about how this is going.
We are looking at, starting a club at the high school to promote education, especially special education for teachers. So we want to have our students be involved in the club. The stipend for the grant will be used for the club advisor. Part of the club will be to interact with students with disabilities. And our overall goal is for year two to hopefully add a course as an elective that will promote teaching, teaching about disabilities, and then having our students go to various classrooms and have a mentor teacher that they can work directly in the classroom with our students.
Are you targeting a specific grade level for this?
Nine through 12.
All four grades?
Yes.
Would be one high school or both?
We're just starting at Keystone Central at the middle school this year. I mean, sorry, the high school, Central Mountain High School.
High School to start.
Yes.
It's a good idea. Get them interested in at that age. And hopefully they'll carry through with it, stay good, go on.
So Dr. Barnhart's comments triggered something I should have mentioned also in my superintendent's report and forgot. And Kurt Lynch is on here still with us. I believe we shared with you, at least at curricular, co-curricular level, that we wanted to start an education program in our Career and Technical Center and that we've been working directly with Lock Haven University and now the Commonwealth University to have a career pathway for students who want to be secondary education teachers or any education teacher. We have an early childhood program now, which has been flourishing. And we wanted to add that program, but the roadblock we hit was that Pennsylvania did not have an approved program for a general education, Career and Technical Center program. So Mr. Lynch led the charge along with myself and Dr. Denise Tyson. And through that submitted an application to the state to have a new program added, a new SIP code added for Pennsylvania. And we received recent notification that we, it has been approved. And so now we'll be working through our curricular, co-curricular committee to get another program approval with all logistics before we start that program. So we're hopeful that by this time next year, we'll have students enrolled in that program and starting. The idea would be that students could get their freshman year of college, all the credits they need in that program, done through their junior and senior year of high school, and then through the dual enrollment process, which would also be at a reduced rate. And then they would spend three years in the college-level programming out of our high school. And then we would be able to, I will call it almost like our own teacher farm, produce certified teachers back into our program at a faster rate. And our hope is that this will address the the teacher shortage locally and, you know, nationally, and lead the way as one of the premier programs in Pennsylvania. So more to come.
So when do you think that will be, we'll be able to get that started like a year from now?
We're hoping to be able to have students select that program in their course selection process during the upcoming school year for the following school year. So it would be 23, 24, right, Mr. Lynch?
Yeah, yep. The state still has work on the back end. I didn't see certain qualifications for teachers and stuff yet, but they announced two weeks ago, I think, a week ago. I'm not even sure now. And the thing that made me mad is they didn't notify me. I just, I got an email that was out to everybody that it's been approved, and we fought really hard to get it. And so it's now on the state books, so we can start working to get the program put together.
I think Jeff and Tracy, you were with me at the legislative meeting when we talked about the roadblocks that we were having, and miraculously those roadblocks went away. So I think legislative advocacy works.
Sometimes it does.
Thank you, Senator Chris Dush.
Yes.
Thank you. That's very exciting.
Did that answer your question about the program? And what what triggered that was, Elizabeth, when you talked about that course, it reminded me that that course could be directly linked through the potential new Career and Technical Center program coursework because it would be aligned to that curriculum. Thanks, Elizabeth.
We have an agreement, proved the pathway agreement with Pennsylvania College of Technology. It's for the diversified occupations.
Yeah, DO, this is Daisy's program.
That's an articulation agreement for diversified occupations. So when a student goes through diversified occupations, they'll get an automatic three credits if they passed an OCTI at Penn College.
Three college credits, right?
We call, yes, yes. They're just transferable or generalized credits. That's a new state mandate too, that you'll see a lot of them coming through and working every program for more articulation credits.
And then we also have, I'm assuming this is kind of the same thing, an articulation agreement through Thaddeus Stevens College Technology on your machine tool technology.
Yes, it's the same thing.
And then we have a parent transportation agreement for a parent to transport their child from home to school. And then we have our repository property bids. Any comments or questions? Yes, Elizabeth?
Thank you. I know we've talked about it before. And if I remember correctly, what happens is when someone buys something for $800, the assessed value stays at $800 unless the person publicly sells it at a higher price. So we, the taxes are only, no matter what the property is or how it's, what it looks like or the condition. And if the person does a lot of improvements to it, the tax, according to the, the tax rate though, it would still be the $800, correct? Unless someone sells it and then it becomes a new public record, is that correct?
That's correct, Susan's nodding her head, yes.
Okay, and so my one other question, I don't remember, I'm sorry. And if we don't have the answer now, that's fine. But whenever the county does their new assessment, whatever that is, property assessment, and let's say they say that $800 property is now worth, I don't know, $30,000. Does that mean then it would now be taxed at the $30,000 rate, correct? Is that right? Am I understanding this correctly?
Susan's thinking.
If it's reassessed. When they, if they do, she's saying if they do a reassessment, it would be assessed at the current value, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, well, that's, 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 okay, thank you so much.
All right. And moving on, we have our personnel agenda. There's a list of transfers from bid day and then also the monthly leaves of absence, resignations, employments.
I do expect to have a few more names added to the professional list by next Thursday's agenda. I've been, final rounds, I've completed some today, and I know there are a few more coming up within the next week. And I would like to add those. So it just, I know that the board did provide me the authority to appoint folks to that, but I would like to add them next week if possible, as we're able to get them hired. We've got quite a few hirings to go. And we're working through them. The admin team's been working really hard on finding the best candidates for these positions. So expect some changes on here between now and next Thursday, additions.
I noticed on the list of the bid day transfers, there is quite a number of displacements on there. I don't necessarily think it's a good thing for the education of the kids. We have to rotate people all the time. I think I counted 16 if I was right, but out of the 40 people that were transferred, so.
Yeah, those were, I think most of those were requested, request for transfer. They were not involuntary transfers.
Right.
Right, and then we're moving on to athletics. Their personnel agenda. Bucktail High School and Central Mountain Coaches for the next upcoming year. Any questions or comments on those? Yes, Elizabeth?
Thank you, hi. First of all, thank you, you know, he did a terrific job, easy to understand. But it would be sort of interesting, maybe during a committee meeting where we can, we could talk about this report and maybe some different ideas, you know, for next year. So I just wanted to put that on the back burner. I mean, there's nothing wrong with this, it's beautiful, it's great. I do have some questions, and now is not the appropriate time, it would not be helpful. And maybe my questions are completely irrelevant. So we could just put that on the back burner, so maybe discuss this at a curricular, non-curricular community meeting someday in the future. That's all I ask.
Are you talking about the coaches lists?
Yes, not the individuals, but just so we all get a better understanding and, you know, right fit for right year. And not that anyone's doing anything wrong or anything like that. And I just think it would be helpful to discuss it, that's all. They have, everyone could be, understand what's, what's behind the reasoning and things like that. Nothing important, just a casual conversation, that's all.
If you want to reach out to me with questions, Elizabeth, you can email them or give me a call. And we can, maybe I can answer some of your questions. And then we can also co-plan for the curricular, co-curricular agendas that are coming up. I believe you're, you're chairing that that group, right? So you have to put it on the agenda.
Well, not if, if no one else wants to discuss it, I just, on the back burner, that's all I'm asking.
All right, well, I'll let it up to you to reach out and let me know when you want to talk about it.
Okay, super terrific, thank you.
Well, that's.
Quick, I would like to make a motion for us to adjourn the work session.
Can I get a second?
Since I haven't really said anything, which is very uncharacteristic for me, I would like to second that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, I was kind of worried about you there. All right. Thank you, everyone, have a great week, we'll see you next week at the voting session.